Okay, if I can get everybody ready to go?
Yes, yes.
Okay, my apologies for being late. We have a couple of council members that are unexpectedly unable to attend tonight. I'd like to have the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Barnes, Mr. Bowersox, Ms. Chanoway, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Smythe, Ms. Stevenson, Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Before we get going tonight, I'd like to call for a moment of silence to recognize those who were lost unexpectedly in Kirkwood, Missouri. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, staff report? Nothing there. In that case, I'd entertain a motion on the minutes of January 28th.
Second.
All those in favor?
No.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Next item is public input. Roy Williams, 1304 West -- not sure. Mr. Williams, I can't read your address here.
I'll remember it anyway. 1304 West Beach in Havana.
Thank you.
Do I sit down?
Yeah, sit down, please. You've got five minutes. We're up to five minutes. We appreciate brevity.
As us input contributors is what you were referring to, right?
Yes.
The brevity I'm talking about that you appreciate?
Yes.
I am here not to -- I guess maybe it is about bricks. On Monday, a week ago, I called the mayor personally at her home because it was a Democratic thing, a Democratic business piece, I felt. I believe that the following day, Tuesday, the 5th, that a conspiracy, or at least the continued actualization of this conspiracy to deny me my right to vote took place coming from the Saturday previous to 5th in a Democratic Central Committee. I believe that Tony Fabry, I believe that Bobby Kirchner and his wife, I believe that other members of that Central Committee's committee sought to deny me the right to vote because I don't take voting as a coming in coloring the thing on Election Day in the booth. I think election voting starts with petitions, signing them, circulating, spreading out the campaign materials. I think all that's voting, this is for me. I was detained. That's always an ugly scene for me because in one of our neighboring countries, it's a practice of our government to have that take everything that a man might be entitled to from a Guantanamo detention by police officers as I left the polls. I was soundly scolded, instructed, and told that I had said a cursed word in front of a woman. I remember back to the scene in that poll and I felt that, you know, if I had said something, I more than likely would have said that this is a pox fate, fat, flatback, no booty, Judy -- or Linda, rather, cross-looking, oh, I'm not I'mis. I didn't get up to the H. Oh, I believe that those people plus others, and I'll be going to other places, the police officers, Miller by name, attempted to be a professional one, run me out there and scold me for the five minutes and send me on, but I think it hit. There was a lead car, a control officer there, I believe, and he made it take 20, 25 minutes so that I understand you don't just cause police officers to come out on Election Day. And you causing them to come that way is determined by them saying that, not me. The five minutes will never let me say all the things I need to say here tonight, but and I'm not going to be able to stay here long. But thank you for allowing me, and I'm not finished yet, but I'm coming back. I live in Havana. I would have voted at a Havana precinct because you guys made agreements with the Champaign police to go wherever the hell they want to, that detaining was by the Champaign Police Department at a facility that probably from a police standpoint should have been under the control of Champaign County Sheriff, my experiences, anyway. Lady officers spent a lot of time being very angry, so I understand how important it was. As I, when they allowed me to almost leave, I was warned that you do not come back here under the threat of being arrested for trespass. I've done that 30 days. Better to arrest somebody else for trespass than me. Brick that up, too. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else want to address the City Council? In that case, Cynthia Hoyle with -- who's going to do? I'm sorry, Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, this is, you know, a little bit from the side. It's probably the appropriate time in the meeting to make a public reminder and a public invitation to the citizens of Havana and any surrounding burgs to come this weekend on the 17th, February 17th, to Lincoln Square Mall. The hours between 3:00 and 5:00, but also you may come earlier to the courthouse and have a free public tour of the courthouse, the backs, the interior parts of the courthouse. And why would you be doing this? Is because this is our first kickoff event for the celebration of the city's 175th birthday. We have distributed posters for the event, which you might find, you know, in a wind of a business in downtown or in the shopping areas of our city. And we will have a program of music from various groups, including the high school choir, the Bonetius String Band, Oberon the Possum King. We will have skits by the Zoo Improv Theater. We will have brass music on period instruments from the Sousa Archive Instrument Collection at the university. And I'm sure I'm probably missing something, but basically, the most fun part is that we're going to have nonstop children's entertainment activities, and we're going to have a cake to celebrate the city's birthday. The cake is going to be 1 centimeter for every year of our history. It's 175 centimeters. I think that's of almost six feet long. So, anyway, we're hoping to have a lot of fun. And also, this is actually now a reality, the city is going to be selling a commemorative calendar honoring the history of Havana. It just went to the printer today. We will have it on Sunday to distribute, and if you're interested in catching up on some of the fantastic images from the past in the Urbana's history and keeping track during the coming year, I encourage you to stop by and get one.
Thanks, Dennis. Laurel?
I just want to thank Dennis for the beautiful artwork that he's done on this project and all his enthusiasm on this. The calendar is really beautiful, and everything that you've done on this is just very attractive. And I think it's going to be a really fun event, so I hope you all come.
Okay, Cynthia, you're up. Cynthia has a presentation on my plan, the CU Mass Transit District. A little help from staff. I just wanted to introduce Cynthia Hoyle, who is a consultant working with Champaign, Urbana Mass Transit District. Specifically tonight, there's going to, she will be providing an overview of my plan, which is a mobility implementation plan for Champaign, Urbana. This has to do with mobility in the bigger sense. It's not limited to transit or buses. It deals with how people move about and circulate within all of our communities. So it's a broad topic, excuse me, it's a broad plan. It's being paid for through a generous grant through the federal government. And with that, I'd like to introduce Cynthia Hoyle.
Thank you very much for letting me come tonight. I did a presentation previously with a brief overview of the process, and I wanted to come back and bring you up to date, and I have a little PowerPoint presentation. And I brought along copies of the Phase 1 synthesis report that has been completed, and we'll go through some of the results. The Phase 1 was an extensive marketing program, but I'll start here with just a brief overview that the purpose of the Mobility Implementation Plan was to implement the Long Range Transportation Plan. Is there something I'm supposed to do to -- oh, there it is. Okay. And so this chart just provides a really little brief graphic of the desired outcomes that our Long Range Transportation Plan was looking for. We wanted to increase mobility, provide people with choices and modes so they don't have to drive, and we wanted to see more core development. We wanted to reduce congestion, make it so people didn't have to drive, and reduce fringe So this is a chart of the process. It's a three-year process. It's been a very large project. And Phase 1 was a very large community input and market data analysis collection phase. And we have finished that. We have the results from it. The document that I gave you is a synthesis of some of the highlights. Anyone who wants more detailed information, the reports on each one of these studies is posted on the MyPlan website, which is MyPlan spelled M.I. I have myplan.com. And you can also, I think, access it through the MTD website. So we are moving into Phase 2. And just a brief review of some of the issues that we've been addressing here. As a community, we want strong economic growth. There is a lack of dedicated revenue. For example, in Champaign, they have an issue with paving their arterial streets in the areas that have grown. We desire compact and smart growth, but it is less expensive right now to build on the periphery. We hope that our households will be able to pay less than 30% of their income on housing, but increasingly, more and more are paying higher than that, especially if you combine transportation costs with housing costs. We have high levels of ridership by the MTD, and on campus, we are still trying to deal with the issue of conflicts between the different modes, automobiles and buses, bicyclists and pedestrians. And right now, we have short commutes, but those will be increasing if we continue with our current development patterns because people have to drive farther and more people will have to drive. So these are the things that we did during Phase 1, and it's a little fuzzy, so I'll read through it. For the general public, we had several processes for input. We had Neighborhood Transopoly meetings, key informant sit downs. They, consultants, went and sat down with 50 key informants in the community and got input from them. There were also some focus groups, and then we had an onboard survey on the bus for a week. There were trained people on buses handing out and collecting surveys. Then we did the electronic surveys that we mailed out. They went to the students on campus. We got 3,319 responses. And then we also sent the electronic surveys out through major employers, including the city of Urbana, and we had over 3,000 responses there as well. Altogether, we had 9,000 contacts with the community in collecting data. Some of the highlights of what people look for were, and what they asked for consistently, and they asked for these things consistently through each of these different ways of collecting data, the transopoly, the surveys. Things that they really wanted were better street lighting, they want bicycle routes and paths, they asked for more direct service buses along arterials, and they also said that they weren't really interested in having a tram or a light rail, but they are interested in having some high-capacity option, especially on campus. Some of the, they identified what they called niche markets. There are groups of people who are interested in these things, park and ride, maybe on the periphery with express bus service, van pools, particularly for the university. There was a lot of interest in that, and maybe even for some of the major employers, that would be an option. An accessible taxi. The handicapped community said that we have no taxis that they can utilize right now with the Transit District's half-price cab fares. Discussion about a shopper shuttle in the North Prospect area. And there was a lot of interest, there's been a lot of interest in having some transit service connecting the two downtowns, along with, we've been talking about transit corridors and longer service on Sundays. Some interesting things about the student market I wanted to share with you. As you see here, the majority of students own a vehicle, and 42% of them live off-campus. 57% of them are employed, but only 11% of them drive alone to campus. So the vast majority of students are getting around without driving. They have really good choices here for mobility. They do not have to drive. And this chart shows you their mode choices, and walking is the major mode. There is a misconception among some people that students are not walking and that they take the bus for a block rather than walk for a block. Perhaps when the wind chill is minus 20, they may do that, but they are walking a lot. And then the second major mode for them, then, is the transit system. As you can see, cycling varies from 9% to 12%. And it'll be interesting, this next census, to see if cycling is a larger share of the mode choice. In the past, the census is not broken cycling out. It was in the other category, but this next census, it's going to be its own category. So it'll be interesting to see where that is at. Another thing that the consultants said is in their analysis that the annual boardings per year at this university are twice what they are at our peer institutions. And today, the traffic planning analysis at the Transit District told me he thinks that our daily boarding on campus by students is actually higher than 26,000 per day, and that 51% of the riders on our city routes are not students. So even if you took students off the buses, the ridership on this system is something that many communities the same size would very much like to have in their community. So the community and the university are utilizing the system extensively. Another thing that they found, which I think that we were not all aware of, is that the students are using the buses to go to work, and they're using them to go to work on-campus and off-campus. So the transit system is providing a critical link, an integration link, between the university and the community. So then the consultants took a look at, well, why does the Transit District have such a strong market on campus? And it's because we have good frequency, the routes are coordinated with the class schedules. Also, one thing that we have here, which is really critical, is that 80% of the people who ride the bus, it's a one-seat ride, they don't have to change buses. And the more you make people change buses, the less likely they are to ride. People don't like switching buses or trains or whatever. Also, because on-campus, the students and the faculty and staff have universal access with their IDs, so they don't have to have change. I don't know about you, but when I've gone to other towns and I go to get on the bus, I'm afraid, you know, sometimes if you ask the bus driver how much it is, they yell at you if you don't have the right change. So it's nice when you just can go on and use tokens or passes. And the parking policies on campus make car use less convenient, so that's another big factor. In taking a look at the potential for additional use for off-campus, the students are interested in using the bus for more work trips, and, for example, at Market Square, there have been requests by some of the major stores to operate longer service on Sundays so that their employees can get back and forth. Also, people, once again, would like to see more direct service, but how do you coordinate that with the single-seat trips? And more of the stopwatch, our electronic system is very, very popular, and the students in particular are very heavy users of the widgets and the stopwatch and the text messaging that tells them when the bus is coming. They said they would like to bicycle and walk more, and the key, according to the people who answered the surveys, they want more bike paths. And happy to say that the city of Urbana is about to finish up a bike plan, so that's well underway here. And the other thing that they said was that clearing the sidewalks was very important, and that was something that came out in both with the students and employees and focus groups. So this is just a little chart. This shows you among the employees that we surveyed, among the major employers, where they live. It's fairly good representation of where people live in the community, so we got pretty good response there. And you will see that they are sort of the negative of the students. 74% of employees are driving by themselves to work. And so we did a lot of asking of people about, you know, if some services were available, would they shift modes? And it says the people who live in town are much more likely to utilize non-auto mobility. As you know, in the city of Urbana, 17% of the people walk to work, which is a very high number. And altogether, in Urbana, we've got 35% of the work trips are non-auto, but as you move farther out, that drops very rapidly. Over half of the people riding the bus have a car, and they choose to take the bus. So it's not a matter of they're not being able to drive, it's a choice. And everybody has a short trip to work, so that's not really one of the major reasons. In some places, driving to work takes a lot longer than taking transit. And people are very satisfied with the transit service, even people who are not using the transit service feel that it's a good service. This was a little chart included to show you who there were among those people who are not using the Transit District that might be interested. So what you want to look at are the people who said they were potential users. The people who are rejecting transit service, there's a large share of them that it's not worth spending time on because they have a variety of reasons for why transit isn't going to work for them. Parking that is inexpensive and convenient is a major reason why people drive. And so if you want to manage congestion and traffic, you have to manage parking. If you want people to drive less, you have to, you probably need to take a look at pricing parking as a market item, not just as a subsidy. They are willing to spend more time riding the bus than they do driving, but they're not willing to spend twice as long or longer. So there's a limit to how much people are willing to spend in time to take transit. There was interest expressed in neighborhood circulators and more direct service along arterials, same, some of the same results we saw with students. On the long-distance commuters, and the university has a number, Carl has a large number of long-distance commuters as well, 16% of them said that they would be very likely to use an express bus service, so there's a real potential for park and rides to work there. Residents of Mohammed were very likely to express interest in park and ride and express service. So those are things that the cities and the Transit District and the university will need to work on together. Some of the challenges and choices that we've got here is that we know that in order to have a lot of these things in place and work, we have to take a look at land use patterns and the design of what we are building, because if we build so that people have easy access by bike and transit, they will use it, but if you have very low-density, single-family residential that does not provide connections for walking and biking or use of transit, it's just not going to happen. And so the built environment is a key element in providing for choices and mobility for So the next steps in this process are to develop scenarios and to establish the criteria for measuring investments. One of the things that we laid out in the RFP on this was we wanted them to give us an investment strategy for infrastructure so that we could make the best choices in spending money for infrastructure to get the sort of transportation system that we want. So I was just going to talk very briefly about the scenarios because that's a big part of what we're doing next. And that also occurred with the Long Range Transportation Plan, so we have taken those scenarios and built on that to a degree. And what we want to do is measure mobility and identify the optimum scenario. So there are two different ways that we are doing this. Based on our existing population projections that were done for the Long Range Transportation Plan, we want to look at what will happen with our current development patterns if they continue, and what would happen then if we had what we call balanced mobility-enhanced development, the more infill, higher density, less fringe development. Then the next set of scenarios, we wanted to see, well, what would happen if, for some reason, the community took a sudden growth spurt, which has happened to other places? And so what would happen if we were developing with our current patterns if that occurred? And what would happen if we had a more balanced mobility-enhanced development pattern? It would also give us, we're hoping to be able to use a model that would help us also analyze things like the impact on the environment and our resources and city services. The benefit of this is that it probably provides what you would say the bookends of the likely development scenario over the next 30 years. It's got a high projection and a reasonably low projection, and probably will fall somewhere in between. It gives us a roadmap for our investments, like I said, for mobility and how to support the growth that we want instead of just reacting to growth that's proposed. And it will give us a framework for how to move forward with this, and it will be going to COUAT's. Well, COUAT's actually did adopt the process for the, for Phase 2 at their January meeting. So the timetable is that we are hoping to have the scenarios and the other analysis from Phase 2 done in April, and Phase 3 done by the end of the summer because the process is scheduled to wrap up in fall of this year. After that, the Transit District will be taking a look at how to redo its routing and how are we going to provide for a more seamless transportation system here in the community. So if you all have any questions, I am happy to attempt to answer them.
Thanks, Cynthia. Questions? Danielle?
Danielle?
This is great, and when I saw my plan unveiling, I thought that this, it's this kind of long-term planning that's going to keep us from becoming, you know, like Florida, where I come from, which has some of the worst development patterns that you can find in the country. I just, just a couple of things, since you're here and you're looking at issues. I've always been curious why the bus stops, especially the ones that have the countdowns, which are extremely helpful, don't have clocks on them, and they also don't have route maps anywhere. So if you're someplace, like, and you're not sure exactly what route to take, you're constantly having to ask bus drivers and load bus drivers, and so we slow down buses that way, and I see that happen a lot. And so I guess I just wanted to give those two pieces of input. It should be the case that we have some kind of, you know, route map right there at the bus stops and a clock that we can compare certain things to, and neither of those things exist right now.
I think they are working on route maps.
Okay.
That's not something I do with them, but I have been hearing people talking about production of route maps and laminating them to put out, and I will ask about the clock.
And two other concepts, just to put in your hat. The first is that I think especially for the parts of the community where there are a lot of children riders, like the downtowns, you see a lot of kids getting on the bus. I see the bus stop from my office, so I can actually see all the people getting on and off the bus, the downtown bus stop all the time. And so, there's nothing for the kids to do. And I think that with the Public Arts Program that we're working on at the city, and also perhaps depending on the location, you know, if it's the county, next to the county courthouse or whatever, and the partnership with U of, with MTD, we should be looking at ways to actually make the bus fun for families to use instead of a drag, because they're constantly having to occupy their children while they're waiting for the bus, and it ends up being this real pressure. And it seems like it would be easy enough for us to actually co-locate, you know, children's play spaces in some of the spaces where we have enough space to do that. So that's a third idea. And the fourth idea is for us to, and I know in downtown Urbana, we could look at doing this quite efficiently, and downtown Champaign also has wireless, to actually provide wireless access for people who are waiting at the bus stop, so that they have public access to the internet while they're waiting. And so that way, doesn't feel like it's an inconvenience at all. In fact, it's like the airports and other places where we wait between things, it's pretty easy to get on and do work and check email and things like that. And with people getting the compact phones and other things where they're spending, where it's easier and easier to get online with less kind of infrastructure, I think it would be great if we could, you know, if we're talking long-term plans, I think we need to be looking at long-term broadband access, at least on bus stops, if not on bus stops. And there are examples, and there are examples, I think in Tennessee, I know that the QAn Group is working, because some of the open-source software is actually being used on, is being used to investigate the possibilities for public transportation, and so they would know a little bit more about who is using it. But I know that there's a Tennessee group and a couple of other groups who are looking at actually installing wireless on the buses themselves, so that basically you can, you know, if you have a half-hour bus ride, or you're coming from Mohammed, you can be online the whole time. And therefore, it's a wash, because what happens, it's not just parking. I use Amtrak to go to Chicago all the time. Hopefully, that will stay the same, with the cuts in Amtrak. But the reason I do that is not only because I have to figure out how to park my car, work at UIC, it's one of my clients, but also because I can work the entire time. I can bill from the moment I get on the train to the moment I get off the train, two and a half hours of work that I would never be able to bill if I was in my car. And I think a lot of people, professionals, are working that way. So, if you can actually have that added value, I think that makes a huge difference for employees and to others who are coming, professionals who are using the bus, who might be coming from further distances.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor?
Cynthia, we've been using the number that seventeen percent walk. And I'm a little confused. On page fifteen, you say that e-survey shows thirty-six percent. You know, and it's higher on campus, obviously, there's people who live there, but I was wondering about page twenty-five, where it said only five percent of the total sample said that it was reasonable to walk to work. Is that a different group, a different subgroup of people on page twenty-five?
Yes, I think probably, what that is, is that, in the sample, the people that they asked about whether it was reasonable to walk to work, and apparently, five percent of them said that it was. I know the census data says that seventeen percent of the work trips are by walking, but I don't know what percentage of that seventeen percent work on campus or at these employers. So, this is-
So that's supposed to be the whole group, when it says five percent?
Yes.
Okay.
If I understand-
Sounds kind of-
I can, I can check on that. I don't think that that's a subgroup. It says that five percent of the total sample, it doesn't say-
Oh, so maybe that includes Mohammed and everybody?
Right, yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's including everybody coming from everywhere, and so there are quite a number of those-
Okay, so we could still be at seventeen, and maybe it's higher on the campus itself.
Right, and we could try to take a look at data based on geographical area, responses based on geographical area. I don't remember for sure whether they got the addresses of the respondents or asked them to locate themselves.
Okay, thank you.
But, yes, Urbana is, is different in that respect significantly.
Any other questions? Robert?
I was just going to add that I kind of summed this up by, it's a plan to ensure that we have transportation choices by design rather than chance. You know, we're not trying to leave it to chance, that we'll have choices in the future. The other thing I wanted to mention is that Urbana city staff has been taking part in this plan, what public works and planning, as in advisory capacity for the technical committee, but that the plan itself would be adopted, I assume, through COUATs, which the city of Urbana is part of, so it'll be kind of a regional decision on whether or not to adopt the plan.
Robert, or Dennis?
You may not be the person who actually has information on this, but I've noticed a more, a greater frequency of people on scooters or motorized bikes. And I'm wondering if that kind of mode of transportation is in an upswing, and if you have any information about whether it's popular now on this campus? And if it's considered to be a useful mode, or is, does it worry people who are driving?
Well, probably the answer is yes to both, that worries people and it's an answer. I was at the Walk-Bike Conference in Madison a couple of years ago, and I went on a tour of their campus. They have a large number of people using scooters, and they have special parking for scooters on campus. And they have a nice bike path system as well. The issue has arisen of people using the scooters on the bike paths, it's not made for motorized vehicles, and so there are issues that come with that. I think that scooters are likely to become more popular if fuel prices continue to increase. It is going to be a special subgroup, because not everybody's willing to put on all the gear necessary to scooter through bad weather. Same thing is true for cyclists. As you know, we have cyclists here who are putting on snow tires and biking right on through winter. And so, this, but that is also a special subgroup of people. I think this plan, what it's trying to do is take a look at all of the various subgroups and put them together, so that we can all move around without having to make choices that we otherwise would prefer not to make, like driving our car.
Walking is so slow when you can ride a bike. Any other questions for Cynthia?
Well, thank you all for having us here. And I will mention as well that the Transit District is currently developing a policy to allow folding bikes on buses. Those have become a very affordable option. I bought one for my husband after his bike was stolen on campus, locked up outside. And people can take them in their office, keeps them out of the weather, but we have to develop a policy. Carrying things on buses always carries issues with it. So, if you want to be able to bike and ride the bus, you're going to have a number of options. We have racks on all the buses, as you know, if you choose to ride a regular bike. And thank you all for having me.
Thank you. Next up is, interesting establishing a sister relationship with the city of Zomba in the Zomba Municipal Assembly, Malawi, Africa.
I hope to do a, an overhead projection thing.
By the way, I've asked, I've sent email to Bill Dejournette to have him take a look at our overhead projector. It seems to be out of whack, so.
That's the on switch, and then hit the sun. Ready? Do a little up?
No, listen. But you probably need to ask, or, say, can you switch to the Elmo?
Okay.
When you're ready.
Sure, let's switch to the Elmo, if possible. There is Elmo there right now. Well, you know, I guess, this is my, this is my little, I don't know, excitement, and I hope to, you know, get the city council kind of excited about the same thing, too. You know that there was a time about a year and a half ago when we explored a sister-city relationship with Yimay, China. A gentleman who lived in town approached the city council and said, hey, this is a good idea, let's try to do it. And it turned out, one, he moved away, and two, they didn't want us. It turned out that the municipal government in China didn't think we were big enough and strong enough, or whatever, to match, go head-to-head with them. So, that was interesting. I was really kind of excited about it, because I, I'm a landlord, and I've had Chinese graduate students living in my home for the last five years. So it's, you know, I'm very curious, you know. Very nice people. So, well, it just sort of petered away, and then it turned out that I heard about the local trip that happens about every two or three years of a group here at the Presbyterian Church who go to Africa, and they do well-digging for, you know, rural neighborhoods out there in, in Africa, in the nation of Malawi. So, I went on that trip, and during that trip, I found out some very interesting things. Maybe I'll just show you some pictures of where, who these people are that I'm so interested about. And let's see how this works out, and, okay. These are the, the local group from, these are Urbanaites on their way to Malawi at the airport. And they've been going for ten years. This is about the fourth or fifth visit that they've made, and they always go to the same community, and it's in the area of, a municipality called Zomba. It's a district like a state in the country of Malawi. And Malawi is in southeastern Africa, and it has a fairly temperate climate, but in the winter, it rains a great deal, and they have then a drier period in the summertime. So, we always have gone in the winter when it's their summer, and it's been dry. So this is a typical scene on the, a small college campus. Educational institutions are highly prized in this country, and most of them are financed by either a church group or an outside organization. Because the most, the average, average income for a month in Malawi is about thirty-five dollars. Here are some people in Malawi who are on their way to work. They just walk down to the road and wait for a bus to come up, and they go into town. If you're going to go shopping, you would shop outside at a, at an outside market, and then you would take, well, there, I mean, there is a, there is a capital, and they have apartments, but for the most part, people, it's a rural neighborhood. You would buy your materials, and you would go home and cook them in your kitchen, which looks like this. It's basically three rocks and a bunch of sticks that you light up, and you boil up your food and serve it. And the group that I went with was very interested in public, the public drinking crisis in Africa, and so their project was to dig shallow wells of water. Here is a typical well in a village that just digs down into the earth until they reach the water, and then they go down and they get buckets of water, and they take it home, and they probably boil it or something to use for cooking or bathing. So, this group was helping, and this longstanding project is really all about digging these inexpensive wells and trying to supply the area with nice water. And so the various church groups have been coming from Europe and now America to do this kind of work, and they are, you know, received, you know, with a lot of pleasure by the people who are going to benefit from the well-digging. So, while I was there, we happened to actually install a well. These are scenes of what it's like to do that. And the finished well, they say that when a well is installed, the intestinal flu and health problems of the village go to zero, because so often, a lot of the health conditions that make them unable to work sometimes during the week has to do with the water they're drinking. Okay, so, okay, but the city council doesn't necessarily need to be just interested in, you know, do-goodism, or whatever. There are other kinds of things that I have discovered, we have already established in relationships with this community. For one thing, several of the important people in the Malawi, kind of like sub-level of government, especially in the agricultural area, actually receive their schooling in, at the U of I. And there is a family that came here about thirty years ago, raised their son, and went back to their country, and they still interact with the citizens of Urbana in particular. And one of these people is Grace Melindi, and, let's see, I guess I don't have a picture of Grace, I didn't bring a picture of her, but I have a picture of her son, who, when he was here in America, he was thirteen years old, and now he's thirty years old, and he works at the embassy in the state, in the capital for the United States. So he is actually, he's an embassy employee for cultural affairs. And I talked to him about a project that I thought I would be, do as a person when I was in Malawi. And that is, since I work at a university press, I thought, well, I, you know, we have books, we publish books about Illinois, so I will bring some of these books with me on the trip, and visit a library and give the books to a librarian in Malawi. Well, it turned out, it turned out to be an incredible experience. I did bring some books with me, and here's a picture of the, in one of the offices of Demasi College of Education. And I only, you know, brought like four or five books per, you know, college, library that I was aware of. They told me that their books are about thirty years old, that most of the books are outdated on the shelves. So I thought, well, jeez, we have tons of books in the United States, and we have, you know, the library gets rid of them, tries to sell them for like a fifty cents a piece at the, I just began seeing all these connections, how things that we were discarding could really be useful in other parts of the world. So I actually did visit the University of Malawi Chancellor's College, and this is what their campus looks like. So, right there in the city of Zomba, they have the biggest university in the country. It's, you know, fairly comparable to the U of I here on our campus. So they have the educational and cultural resources that we do, you know, in their own culture. So I did visit that, that school, and I met Mr. Virupiri. And Mr. Piri couldn't believe that I was visiting him, because two weeks previous to my arrival, he actually had come to America. And, and it was on a cultural exchange, tours, the, I was like the national government's libraries of association, or I don't know what, you know, had supplied this experience. And he came to Urbana and was in Urbana for two days. And then I, then I appear in his office two weeks later, and we're just like comparing notes and thinking, what's all this about? So, I've made a friend with, with Mr. Piri, and I gave him these books, he was so pleased to get them. And since returning, I've actually sent five boxes to his library, and they're, again, very pleased. So, and I'm, and I'm using my friend that I made at the US Embassy, who was, in his childhood, lived in Urbana for seven years, as the go-between, because the books could be sent to the embassy for- could be sent to the embassy for Bookrate America. And then they're delivered to the libraries in Malawi for practically nothing. I wanted to send one book, a dictionary, to a friend of mine I made in Malawi and the, and the post office told me it could cost $69. But I can send a box that weighs 20 pounds for $7 through the embassy. Well, during my stay there, because I, you know, I was staying at, in, for a couple days in the capital at the home of a fairly important woman in the agricultural department. She threw a party and this lady here is the Minister of Parliament for Zomba area. Her name is, oh, now I've just forgotten her name. Okay, it'll come back to me later. Her name is Joyce Banda. And so I had an opportunity to talk with her and I said, well, you know, we're already working with your community to make wells. And on this last trip, the Urbana Rotary Club joined the well, the well-building program and they got a grant from the Rotary International and they donated $7,000 to build yet more wells, 100 more wells, south of the Zomba area. So we have the Rotary, we have a local church, we have a library, a library book interaction happening. And so, and I've met the Prime Minister of Zomba and I said, well, what do you think about, you know, keeping this up and making something of it? And they were, they're very interested. So I said, well, you know, we have these, this program in America called Sister Cities and for a fairly reasonable fee, we can have, we can establish a, you know, kind of like an organized thoughtful interaction with another community. And we've already thought about it once before and it really didn't work out because really, I guess, because we didn't have the right kind of structural ties with those people. Well, I'm looking at this now and I'm thinking, man, all the ties are already here. We have, we have people in this community that go every other year to this very spot in Africa where these people live. We have, they have an ongoing financial relationship between their banks and our local banks to pass money for the well projects. The Rotary Club has just decided to come in on it. I'm still interested in, you know, sending them books and helping with the educational aspects of it. And I talked to some of their secondary educators and they said that they would be very pleased to have, you know, student-to-student interactions and pen pal letters and, you know, exchanges like that. So I guess the long and the short of it is, really, there doesn't seem to be any reason why we just don't, you know, do something and kind of jump into this and make something of it. So I got the application forms from Sister Cities International and for a community that's between 25,000 and 50,000 population, which would be Urbana, the annual cost of dues, and there are annual costs, is $485. So, you know, it's not, you know, extremely expensive. And I, they offer some pretty interesting projects. Sister Cities is an organization that's just celebrated its 50th anniversary with a conference in Washington DC recently. They offer mayor's roundtable forums on globalization and local economic development. They have work sessions at these meetings annually. They have programs that they help establish. There's a wheelchair program that they offer where there's some, some wheelchair manufacturer makes wheelchairs very reasonably priced and then Sister Cities can tap into this, you know, through grant money or whatever and, and, you know, basically it's the cities in America are sending, you know, wheelchairs to various organizations in other countries. So to top it off, recently, I actually got a real letter from the chief executive of Zomba. And, you know, I guess the deal is that, you know, I'm expressing interest, the mayors expressed some interest, a few council persons have been curious, but, you know, do they want us? Well, so Mr. Musa Mwale is the chief executive of the Zomba District Assembly. He's like, I guess it's like the city council of Zomba. And, and he writes that he, he addresses the mayor as your worship, that they are, you know, keenly interested in building a relationship with Urbana. And he says that indeed, the conversations regarding this development have been going on very well, including the Honorable Joyce Banda, Minister of Parliament. And that their municipality believes that the benefits that would emanate from creating such a relationship would be of great value, value to their community as well as ours and that the nation as a whole. And similarly, your city is likely going to benefit from the relationship considering the fact that our municipality is rich in natural resources, historic infrastructures and culture. Such being the case, Assembly is encouraging you to facilitate the process, to establish this twin-city relationship through Sister Cities International program as indicated by Dennis. So that's my pitch, I think it's a great thing to do, not too expensive and, you know, we might just really learn something from this experience. So I would put it to the city council to approve the step of taking out an application, membership with Sister Cities, saying that we'd like to partner with Zomba in Malawi. Thanks.
Discussion, Heather.
Dennis, on here, this is from 2006. Have the membership fees, quote unquote, they stayed the same or have they changed any?
I haven't gotten any newer ones than that. This is the, came from the packet that I received when I first made my inquiry and the topic had been the China City of Yeme. So they might have, you know, maybe, maybe it's, you know, gone now into like, maybe it's 500 bucks. I don't know. We could look into that, though.
Okay, Dennis, your, your comment earlier was almost a motion. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I do, I will. I shall then make a motion. I would like us to enter into a formal sister-city relationship with the city of Zomba in the country of Malawi, Africa, for mutual edification and learning and cultural exchange and economic benefit and to support not only our application, but if it's required, to support the application of the city of Zomba as well.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Would this be sort of at the staff level at this point, directing staff to begin the formal process? Okay, so it'd be basically a staff motion. Heather.
Dennis, did you say that you've, something about Urbana paying, not that paying their portion or paying their portion? I didn't understand your motion.
Well, if there, if, I know that we would be entering, that we would be paying a fee to have the benefits of the Sister City organization.
Right.
Some of them are procedural and I, and it's possible that we could just, you know, go ahead and say, we'll just be friends with these people. But it does give it some legitimacy and we can host it, you know, at the entrance store city, I think, you know, there's signs and things that you can get. I would have to talk to the, the staff at Sister City again to find out if there was, you know, a mutual fee that both parties had to partake in. I imagine that if you were in Germany, getting a sister-city relationship with a German city, they probably have a fee as well. But this is a developing country, so I don't know if the standards are the same.
Okay. I guess I, I think that if we're going to pay a fee, this is just my own personal opinion, that if we're going to show that we want to be a sister-city with them and they want to be a sister-city with us, you'd think they would pay their portion to show, you know, the dedication to, to the idea. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, and, but I don't know what their typical standard of living resources allow them to do. When, when you look at this picture of the kitchen, it, it didn't have any running water in it and it was basically three rocks on the floor.
Well, I would, I would imagine that Sister City can provide you some information there and, and as you figure this out, I mean, it's going to take a little, it's going to take some staff time and, and to figure this out.
There is a Sister City representative in Illinois. Maybe we can have them come down and visit us perhaps.
Okay. I, go ahead, Danielle, go ahead, I'll, I'll.
I think that for the purposes of cultural exchange and mutual understanding, this is, and also comparing this city to the city we were looking at in the past, the fact that we have, there's an established relationship between grassroots organizations in this community and, and the community in Malawi would make this a stronger candidate. I do have just two brief, so I'm supportive of the concept. I have two brief comments. The first is that I think one of the, one of the dynamics that we see is that Western companies and governments extract resources from African countries, force privatization of the public sector, which has happened, Malawi has been under structural adjustment, and open up markets for those companies to then have access to the resources. And then what happens is that nonprofits and churches from the same countries that are involved in this globalizing effort then, then bring, and oftentimes the governments as well, then send aid in charity. And so it creates, this dynamic is the, is largely the dynamic between Africa and the Western world. And when, when Africans say, they'll call us Europeans, and when they call us Europeans, they mean the West, they mean Europe and they mean the United States and Canada and Australia. And so I think that one of the things I'd like to avoid in this sister-city relationship is to be part of that in some way, because I see that as an imperialist gesture. And I think that the imperialism comes both with the extraction of the resources, forcing the structural adjustment, causing countries to have an intense debt load such that they're paying off. And I couldn't find information about how much their debt load is, but oftentimes the countries are paying a debt load that's greater than, so that they can't actually feed their own people. And so we have to ask ourselves these questions. Why, why isn't there a kitchen? Is it because they're uneducated and they don't know how to build a kitchen? Probably not. You know, so I think I'd like to really look in this relationship, look deeper and to find out, why is it that there is intense persistent poverty? Is it simply because there's been unstable government, which is always the argument given? Or are there other reasons for poverty that actually, you know, that, that, that many of the institutions that we engage in are actually responsible for in some ways? And so, because my experience of, and I work, I've been working with African indie media for years now and went to Kenya last year and continue to have an ongoing relationship and dialogue. But I think that, that one of the issues is that, is that in that charity picture, and I don't see this as a charity thing, I see it as a cultural exchange thing, but the charity picture is a picture where the same, the West is taking and the West is giving and it's a situation of dependence and, and that situation is perpetuated over a period of time. So, so I'd like us to, you know, take this as an opportunity to learn about globalization and to ask ourselves the questions and to ask our sister-city and to begin to get to the, who are the companies who are investing in Zomba? Who are the, what is the debt load situation? What did structural adjustment do for your community? Did the World Bank, you know, did the World Bank subsidies help or not? And, and try to get a picture of why it is that hardworking people who work much harder than many of the people that we'll ever meet in this country can't actually get to the point where their work pays for the food that they need to put on the table every day. And there's a structural picture that we have to look at and we can, and we can help to explore mutually, being two university towns where we have a department here, we have multiple departments here engaged in globalization. We have a global studies unit on campus and I think that this would be an opportunity for us to have these conversations. My second is much more practical. So that's my first statement and that is, I think that we can be a sister-city without necessarily participating in Sister Cities International. I understand that there's quite a bit of support and I guess I'd like to try it, try the membership for a year and see, does this membership, do, does the Presbyterian Church and the other people who are involved with Zomba and the city of Urbana, do we take advantage of these services in any way? And is it useful to us? And if it's not, let's have a sister-city relationship and we don't necessarily have to go through this particular membership-based organization to do that. So.
And to speak maybe to a little bit about that, yes, it's very interesting. Now, Zomba has an economy that's kind of interesting. They are rather large corn producers and they have other kind of local crops, too, but they had a good year last year and last year was the first year that they had enough corn maize grown that they exported it to other countries in Africa. So that was one hopeful thing. And they also, we visited a tea plantation in the south, so, and they grow coffee in the north. It's a city, it's a community also, a country like some others in Africa that has serious health problems because the AIDS epidemic is very high in this particular country. And there are many people that I met, actually several people I met, who have taken on three or four extra children because a relative has passed away. Also, yeah, you know, I think, you know, I'm, I'm always willing to do things, you know, directly and not go through middlemen, you know, if we find that the Sister City organization isn't as advantageous as they kind of say it might be. But the mayor did say that she preferred going through basically structured, well-represented patterns in establishing cultural exchanges between municipalities in different countries. And I, I can understand that, I think that's reasonable. Luckily, it doesn't cost $3,000 to be a member, it's not really that much. So it's, I think it's worth a gamble.
Okay. We have a lot of staff here tonight to talk about the rest of the issues on the agenda, so I'd like to move this along.
Thank you.
Mike, I've got two real quick comments. The whole issue of support from the local community is real important. I was on city council when we had the sister-city relationship with Tartu Estonia. That was sort of generated by some enthusiastic people at the local high school, I believe, but it went away very quickly. So if we're going to do this, it's really important that we have a broad cross-section of the community, you know, Rotary Club, churches, so on, that get involved and stay involved in this. So I think as you find out more information and move forward on, on this item, assuming it has a majority of support, that, that you get a, a plan together of, of how, of where we're going in the future with this, you know, because I don't want to see it like die after two years of lack of interest. In terms of, in terms of the, you know, imperialism versus globalization and so on, I think there are some new models that have been developed. I'm trying to remember who the, there's somebody either in, in New York, one of the universities in New York City, or at MIT or Harvard, who has, has pioneered a different method of working with third-world, you know, lesser-developed nations and, and to avoid exactly the kinds of things that you've raised. And I just can't quite remember the name of the person, but, but there is, there is an alternative model, model out there that addresses exactly the concern that you've raised and it's a valid one. So, yeah, so my big thing is, you know, what's our plan for, you know, taking this more than just immediate? Mayor.
We knew about the Tartu, but we couldn't find any records on it. So I agree with you that we should have this be a broad-based thing. It seems like Malawi does try to make a lot of connections with the United States. Some women from Malawi came to a state meeting of American Association of University Women a couple of years ago and they had people from various walks of life and it was really fascinating to listen to them, the kind of issues that they have to deal with. And I think it's good that we will go forward with this. If you vote on this, I suppose you vote on it and send it to the city council, is that correct? And then we will proceed. But we haven't given up on China, you know, China is a pretty big country. And I did talk with the And I did talk with the woman who teaches Mandarin at Urbana High School, and she said that we could probably become Sister Cities with her city. But I think it'd be good for us to have somebody in Asia, somebody in Africa, and Latin America. But let's start with Malawi because we have the best connections there. And let's ask them not to privatize their water supply.
Yeah, I would like to add one, one other bit in terms of community involvement. We need to, of course, find out who's here from Malawi at the university, what the existing programs are between the university and Malawi and so on. And so I think there's a lot of, of work to be done. I view this as, as a motion to move forward at the sort of staff and informal level until they have something to bring to council. Dennis, did you have something else to add?
Just that I actually heard from a professor emeritus at the university, who however was vacationing in Florida at this time. He said that he was aware that the university Aces Department had a program where they interacted with the agricultural communities in certain countries in Africa. And at one time they had sent three tons of books to, about, I don't know, crop science or something like that, to this country, whatever country it was, and that he himself had over 500 volumes that he was willing to donate to the agricultural program in Malawi. And it turns out that the woman that I stayed with in Malawi for two days in the capital city is the outreach coordinator for agricultural and gender issues in the government. So there are connections that we might benefit from and find very simple.
Yes, I suspect there's some right out of my own department, and there might have been somebody from my own department, so we can talk later about that. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this moves forward. Do you have a green light? Go figure this out. Next up is item number seven, Resolution 2008-0202-R, a resolution authorizing the city of Urbana to participate in the development of a multi-jurisdictional mitigation plan. Robert?
Champaign County has received a grant to write a hazard mitigation plan that would cover jurisdictions in Champaign County, not just the county itself, but other cities and villages as well. And so the county would, is asking if, which jurisdictions would like to participate, including Urbana. As you probably know, Urbana has a hazard mitigation, mitigation plan that was adopted in 2005. It's actually the only jurisdiction in the county who has one. However, there are some benefits to taking part in this larger effort. One, we may be able to look for areas where we can update, areas that can be updated. Second, it makes sense to look for areas where we need to coordinate with other jurisdictions. And third, make sure that our issues are taken into consideration as part of the larger whole. And then finally, in 2010, we are scheduled to take a serious look at and actually update our plan anyway, so we're really working toward that date. It does make sense. They're not, the county's not asking that we provide any money, but actually the match for the grant is in time. And if you all, if the city council would agree to take part, city staff would take part in helping to provide guidance and write the plan. Be coordinated by Champaign County Regional Planning, Champaign County Regional Planning.
Danielle?
I move to send this to council with recommendation for approval.
Aye, second that.
It's been moved by Danielle, seconded by Dennis to send this to council with a recommendation for approval. Any other discussion? One quick question. I, I take it then that you would say that this is a two-for-one where all staff time invested is gotten back in, in terms of our own planning?
Yes.
Okay. Robert?
In the mitigation plan that was developed in 19, 2005, I thought it was a mandatory that communities of a certain size have those. Is that true or not?
You mean under 2005?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not certain. It's under, it's, it's in response to the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000.
Right.
I do know that, but I'm not sure if cities above a certain size are required to have a plan.
May I ask Chief Dillon?
She should know.
Libby Tyler has an answer.
This 2000 legislation meant that if you prepared a plan and had it ready, should a disaster strike, you would be pre-approved for mitigation money. So that was the incentive. And there was a slow response in complying. We were, I'm the second community in Illinois to get our mitigation plan done, and now the other communities are coming forward. So there's an incentive, and it is legislation. We do need to do this. If we fail to, then we would have to do the plan before we could get the money post-disaster, and that's why we stopped the planning.
Any other, Heather?
I just had a quick question. It's a multi-jurisdictional plan, and monies are to be matched. Is that based on population?
Well, you mean if there's a, if there's a disaster, how it would be allocated or in, in writing this plan?
Well, I guess the question would be both. I mean, twofold.
To, to write the plan, there's a sizable state grant. We would not have to provide any money. We would provide our match in time, in staff time. In terms of how it's allocated after a disaster, I'm not sure.
Mayor?
So we were the second in the state. Who was first?
It's a community up north. It was close though, and we did get a grant from FEMA.
Okay.
It was part of our large project impact grant. So the plan was created by some students at the University of Illinois with our staff, and we had a steering committee that helped prepare that. So we were ahead of the curve, which is good for us.
Thank you.
Others are catching up with us, so.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This goes to council. Next item is number eight, Resolution 2008-0203-R, a resolution concerning the geographical limitations of annexation agreements, RE the Chatham Supreme Court decision. Robert?
Well, it, it used to be the case in Illinois that properties that have, where the property owners have signed an annexation agreement, these are properties in unincorporated county, where they had signed an annexation agreement with the city, they still remained under the county's jurisdiction in terms of laws and compliance with everything that they needed to do. But once the city grew out and to this property, and the property came adjoining, adjoining, then it would be annexed in the city, would become under the city's jurisdiction. So it was pretty clear, county's jurisdiction during the life of the annexation agreement until the city reached it, and then it was annexed into the city, and then it became under the city's jurisdiction. That's no longer the case after a fairly recent Illinois Supreme Court decision. In a nutshell, following that Illinois Supreme Court decision, once a city signs an annexation agreement with that property owner, the property in many ways comes under the city's jurisdiction, certainly in terms of development, but there may be other areas as well. To what extent, we're not exactly sure, although we're working under a state's attorney's general's office interpretation for what that means. For instance, properties that are out in the county now, this is both, it pertains to both existing annexation agreements and new ones. So properties that are in the county now where we have an annexation agreement, and there's a map in your packet showing which ones this pertains to with Urbana. Those properties now come under the city's zoning and development regulations. But do they also come under like nuisance codes? We're not exactly sure. You know, what happens if there's a dog loose and the neighbor calls and says, "Animal Control, you need to come out and pick up this loose dog, it's running around out here." We don't believe so. But we're still working through those issues cooperatively between city staff and county staff about what this means exactly. There's, there's two areas of concern here. One is responsibility, and the other is potential for misuse. Responsibility, I've already mentioned, the city now has the responsibility for following up on various compliance issues. But there's, there's also a potential for misuse that's concerned municipalities all over Illinois, frankly. I'll give you an example. A developer essentially on the, on the edge of one city, if that city doesn't agree to sign an annexation agreement with them, they can, and it's already occurred at at least one occasion, that developer then can go shopping with other cities, sometimes miles away, asking them if they would sign an annexation agreement in order to get zoning and development approvals. This, there's an example in your packet where there was a, a large development of several thousand homes where the community, where it would be located on the edge of that community, they said, "Well, this is, this is not according to our plan, so we would not agree to annex you and grant the zoning approvals." The developer then went out and approached half a dozen other communities. One of them was 26 miles away, and that community was the one they showed the most interest in this development. And that, what that community gained a stand was, they would gain several hundred thousand dollars a year in special fees, but they felt like that they didn't have much responsibility in ever following up on the development in that very large, huge, you might say, subdivision. This, as you might imagine, has communities concerned. And there's a local example here too with Champaign that you might know in a much smaller way, but it does raise the same issue. The city of Champaign, you probably know, signed an annexation agreement with Illinois American Water for a water treatment plant that's located, I believe roughly two miles from the city boundaries. The neighbors in that case felt like that they didn't necessarily, as reported in the newspaper, felt like that they didn't really have, they had really lost a voice in being able to go through the planning and zoning process. Sure, they could go to the city of Champaign and voice their opinion, but since they weren't , were not voters in that community, will their voice really be heard or taken, taken heed to? Ultimately, what needs to happen is the legislature needs to step in and fix this situation, but unfortunately, it looks like they won't be doing so anytime soon. So meanwhile, the Champaign County and various cities within Champaign County are looking at a temporary fix, if you'd like to call it that, whereby through state legislative act, Champaign County would be one of nine counties in the state whereby these annexation agreements would be limited essentially to one and a half miles from jurisdictions. You could, any city could still have annexation agreements with properties beyond a mile and a half if this would occur, but it wouldn't necessarily have the effect that it does within a mile and a half. The county could still retain jurisdiction in a way. So the legal staff for the city of Urbana, Champaign, Savoy, and Rantoul, if I'm remembering correctly, are proposing a legislative fix, and this resolution would support that measure. This resolution is, has been reviewed by Champaign County, city of Champaign. I understand that the village of St. Joseph has already enacted it, and I know that Savoy is also reviewing it as well, if they have not already enacted by now.
Questions for Robert? Danielle?
I move to send this to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Danielle, seconded by Dennis to send this to council. Danielle?
Just a quick question. In looking at the map that are, of properties or areas that are annexed into the city or by the city of Urbana, but aren't, are outside of our incorporated limits, why do those exist? Because I thought that we, when we annexed properties that are, were contiguous, they became part of our, within our boundaries. Could you explain that?
Why are they adjoining but not yet annexed?
They're, they're actually, I believe the properties, aren't the, isn't this picture a picture of properties that have annexation agreements but are outside the corporate limits?
Right.
But they're in some cases surrounded by or contiguous with existing, existing city of Urbana properties?
Well, in a lot of the agreements, it specifies, specifies exactly when that would take place. And to give you one example, with Don Flessner's property up north along Airport Road, it specifies that so many days after this plat is filed, then the property would be, he would cause petition and be filed, be annexed in the city. And I think Libby had some insight on that too.
I think there's probably a story to each of those. I know the Smith Farm, for example, was one that number 15 on the map will be annexed in with the Park District. We just, we're working through some grant issues before that occurred, and there's some other explanations with these. There's really, I think, only three or four in that category. The Pintry Club, annexation agreement that development has not begun, so they haven't filed an annexation yet. That's twenty, number 26.
I got a question.
Dennis?
So this has to do with the zoning aspects of it, but you did talk about, you know, nuisance laws and other such. Would this affect in any way other services the city would be required normally to serve in a, to a contained municipal piece of land, like fire protection or such?
If you look at the state's attorney general's interpretation, it really deals with development issues because that's the Illinois Supreme Court, most of their comments was on the development aspects. And I am not aware that it would include fire and protection and police protection, for instance. And if you read that opinion, it says basically the same thing. Although there are a lot of areas that the opinion doesn't really talk about. I mentioned one, like nuisance laws, about if there's a dilapidated barn, for instance, and a neighbor calls about that, is it the city's jurisdiction or the county's? I know it does, one thing it does not include is property taxes. So once you sign the annexation agreement, it's almost like you have the responsibility, but you're not getting the benefits of the property taxes. There's also a section in his opinion about, or, excuse me, in the opinion about liquor licenses that I recall also.
Robert?
If the city takes on this temporary fix, when do we anticipate a permanent fix?
I, I don't know. It's.
But the Supreme Court has to.
Basically, what the Illinois Supreme Court said is, in essence, in so many words, we know the law is broken, but we're not supposed to fix the law, you know? We're supposed to interpret the law the way it's written. So they really put the ball back in the court of the state legislature. The Illinois Municipal League, I think, really needs to take, take a leading role in this. I think if that happens, then I assume that legislative act would follow, that would, that would have a permanent fix for this. But I don't have any timelines about when that would happen.
Mayor?
Well, this would be a permanent fix for Champaign County, wouldn't it?
It would be a permanent fix in, that would limit geographically, it would lower our exposure from other communities coming in and doing an annexation agreement next to our city borders, and maybe this is a village miles away from us. It would limit us in that way. But it would not. But it would not be a fix in terms of jurisdiction. So we'd still have these same jurisdictional questions, but it would provide kind of a buffer for us in terms of distance.
Any other discussion?
I've got a quick question for you, Robert. So this is actually a request of the legislature to amend existing law, right?
It's actually a request by legal staff of local jurisdictions, Champaign, Urbana, Savoy, Rantoul, who joined together after the county have proposed their own, proposed, looked at passing a resolution. But the local cities have a little bit different take on how best to adopt it. And so they have a little bit different wording.
Okay, I guess, why is there a difference in wording here on something that makes sense to both sides? Or what are the differences in wording, then?
Between the counties and the difference in the cities? I'll have to go back to look at the exact wording, I'm sorry. But it has to do with, it has to do with placing, the county suggested resolution, suggested eliminating some of the powers of the city. It said basically that cities would not do annexation agreements unless X, Y, and Z. And the cities felt like that that was unnecessary and really maybe unwise for cities to do that.
Okay, but it still takes legislative action to amend. We're basically asking for an amendment to existing, existing-
State law.
State law, right?
Right, yes.
Yeah, okay. So what assurance do we have of this actually taking place?
We don't have assurances other than, we really need support of the local communities to make this happen. If Champaign County jurisdictions don't support this, then I don't think it's going to be taken up by the state legislature.
Okay, so we're going to take it to our state legislators and ask them to push for it. Mayor?
I think in the last session of the legislature, a group of counties got together and asked to be, you know, exempted from this, I guess the Supreme Court decision. The law was written so that we would go back to the way things were, that people were used to. For some reason, they didn't include us in it, and so now we're asking to be included in it. And so we would go to our legislators, because this is something that has people kind of in a tizzy around the state. I don't think anything really bad has happened, maybe with the exception of, I mean, there's some disagreement about what Champaign did, but even Champaign says they want to go back so everybody knows what the rules are, instead of having this ominous threat that somebody from Rockford could come and zone something in Champaign County.
Right, and at that time, there was a limitation that included eight counties. And those, some people call them, you know, the ring around the collar counties, or kind of far out, farther out counties. Champaign did attempt to get added to that list, but I think at the time, it was felt like that we've reached this balance, and it would upset the apple cart, you know, if we started adding on other counties. So let's adopt this, and then if other counties want to be added later on, we can consider that at a later time.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This goes to council. Next up is item number nine, ordinance number 200802008, an ordinance advising the annual budget ordinance for art in the park, finance and public works.
Actually, we don't need to take any action. After reviewing more carefully our budget, there is money in the TIF II budget to pay for the brick sidewalk work that we're going to talk about this evening. So a budget amendment isn't necessary, the money is budgeted. But in any event, we thought it'd be appropriate to give you an update with activities with the artist, John David Mooney, and our staff. Mike Brunk has had conversations with him, and we're to a point now where we've come up with the specific brick and design style, which was part of the packet this evening. And again, it's the area, if you've walked to the north of the city building, there's a concrete sidewalk base that's poured many years ago, and that's the base that would support whatever final surface we would, and the artists would come up with. So we're to a point now where there is a artist and sign-off, if you will, endorsement of the design, and we, Mike, has gotten some budgetary numbers from contractors that would be interested in bidding on this, just so we have a budget put together with the materials and the labor necessary to do this somewhat intricate type work. And we're comfortable that the money that's budgeted, which is $70,000, should pay for all the related work to finish up this sidewalk work. We also included pictures of the sculpture piece, and just to give you kind of using a little photo art here, an idea of what this sculpture looked like. Several years ago, John David had presented before the then-city council a maquette, or a small sculpture to scale, that was looked at and reviewed and endorsed or approved upon, what have you. So unless there's questions, Mike, if you want to add anything else, I think our expectation is to have sidewalk work completed later this summer, and it's our expectation through a signed commitment by John David that he would have the work completed on his end, with the sculpture piece, later this year.
Right.
And that there would need to be a crane to install the piece, and there would be some fair amount of concrete foundation and that sort of thing. So again, a tremendous amount of work Mike's been working with John David on, and I brought Mike here in case you may have any questions. Do you want to talk about the details of the brick sidewalk at all, Mike, or?
Well, I brought the brick. The drawing, you know, doesn't give you a good rendition of the colors, so I brought samples of the actual brick, so you can see that the colors that you're seeing in the drawing are what they look like in the brick color. Terracotta, and a chocolate brown, and a beige. The bricks are rated for our use here in frozen wet climate for pedestrian and light vehicular traffic, so they're a good tough brick from a good company, Belden Brick. It's a clay brick, so they have good color. We're pretty excited about the pattern. It should be very unique. I don't think I've seen anything quite like that, so pretty excited about it.
Danielle, then Dennis.
So finally, the mystery is solved, which is that Public Works does the best job of it in town of anything I've ever seen. So anywhere else I go, the bricks are laid perfectly, the cement is perfectly flush, there's no issues. And then when I walk up to the city, I just think, what did we do? Contract this out? What's going on? And so I've always wondered why the, why this looks so unfinished. I actually didn't understand that it really was unfinished, and therefore, we're going to have nice brick. I think this is really lovely, and I like the organic shapes that make up the color scheme that kind of go with the overall park. Will the fountain be turned on, and will it work? Will there be water?
We have had issues with the fountain, but we think we've worked through them all. And yes, it will be turned on, and yes, it will work.
That's great.
I guess I was wondering about the sculptural piece. Is this premature to ask about, like, the materials that are going to be used for that piece, or is this about, only about the brick walkway?
No, I can give you some input on the materials. It's going to be made of stainless steel and painted steel, and it's going to be a lighted piece with LED lights.
Oh, thank God.
But they're shining up, though.
But they'll, you won't, you won't actually see the LED lights themselves, they're behind an integrated shield, and it kind of glows over the piece, if I understand it correctly.
So it's going to be a glow-in-the-dark sculpture?
Well, it'll be a lighted sculpture.
A lighted sculpture.
One question I had, is this, is this gold or silver, or what's the color going to be?
That's a good question. The yellow sculpture is actually a wooden piece that's been superimposed onto the park. And then the silver piece is a computer rendering of the sculpture itself. Either of them show the particular colors that it's going to be.
Not to be facetious, but he said you're going to have painted steel and stainless, right?
Right, combination.
Is he going to guarantee this thing?
Guaranteed.
The sculpture?
Well, the sculpture will be insured by the city.
Okay.
And there will be, we have talked about the painted part of the sculpture, that it needs to be a minimal maintenance.
What my concern is, is I think if you use standard steel, and you paint it, and you combine that with stainless, you got to have some kind of barriers between it for electrolytic corrosion and stuff like that. And I'm just asking the question.
That's a good question. We will be obtaining a structural engineer's design approval and details on the piece itself.
Good.
I got one more. One more.
Dennis, go ahead.
You know, it's sort of intriguing. This park is the closest park to the city building, and it's probably like the most forgotten park in the town. It seems not very open or inviting to the public. Maybe part of it is that the walkway into it is dubious. But I'm just wondering if, if as part of the installation or the reconfiguration of this park, will the, maybe you was an arborist or something, look at the tree layout or something, and I mean, maybe, maybe this is a park that needs to be opened up a little bit so the public can find it. I know it seems to be built to be kind of like a pocket of secure, of, the word is seclusion, I think. And I'm just sort of wondering, it doesn't seem to be all that successful. I suppose now that we're going to have a 70-foot telephone pole with a circle on it in our park, people will notice it finally, and if it's lit, they'll be able to come and read at night.
Well, certainly art, art evokes emotion, doesn't it? And most certainly will do that, or it wouldn't be, wouldn't be art.
It only looks about 35 feet tall, I don't think it's 70.
See it, I can tell you now.
Thanks, Mike, thanks, Bill. Anything else on this one, we'll move on. Okay, next up is item number 10, ordinance number 200802009, an ordinance approving an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Champaign, and an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with the University of Illinois and the city of Champaign's fire protection mutual assistance. I'm going to continue moderating this discussion, but I will not be voting on the motion, and I will be recusing myself next week, since this pertains to the South Farms.
This is an amendment to the initial intergovernmental agreement between the cities of Champaign and Urbana and the University of Illinois for fire protection. And as a result of the expansion of the South Farms and their desire to have us continue to protect that area of the campus, we're expanding that south boundary from Curtis Road to Old Church Street Road.
Danielle?
I move approval of this ordinance to city, I move this ordinance to city council with recommendation for approval.
Second?
Sarah, there's a motion by Danielle, seconded by Heather, to send this to council. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, and final is a discussion on hybrid vehicles. Ron Eldridge?
We just wanted to touch base with you on this one question, a practical question, that the city's getting ready to replace a small subcompact car, and we know one of the goals of the city is to be green, and an important part of that is hybrid vehicles, as we've discussed before in the budget, and we're not, even though we're recommending in this case to purchase a non-hybrid vehicle, we're not abandoning, we want to make sure that we're not abandoning our commitment to use hybrid vehicles. We just purchased two to replace the two meter vehicles, and we purchased another one to replace another sedan car in the city fleet. But in this instance, because the subcompact gets such good gas mileage, there's very little difference in gas mileage between that small car and a hybrid vehicle, and the cost, the difference in the purchase price is over $10,000. So in this case, I think it makes sense, from a number standpoint, to go ahead and purchase the subcompact car rather than buy the more expensive hybrid.
I have one question. I thought the Ford Focus also was available in a hybrid version.
Not through the city purchasing, I don't believe, or not through the state purchasing.
Okay. I guess my only question on this would be, you know, would it be possible to go outside of state purchasing to get something reasonably close to this as a hybrid vehicle? You know, could we, could we get a Ford Focus as a hybrid from somebody else?
Can you answer that?
I don't believe it's available, the Ford Focus. That technology hasn't made it down, I mean, it's not cost-effective in the lower-priced vehicles, so what you're finding them in is more like the $20,000 and uprange, which would be the Ford Escape, the Prius, the Toyota Camry. In any of my readings and research, I've not found a Ford Focus.
Yeah, I guess the one thing in here is, I don't know what the emissions, tons per year are. I know the Prius is like three and a half tons per year, which is, you know, half that of other compacts. I guess it'd be good to know what the emission levels are of, of this vehicle, so that we understand that, you know, this $12,000 or $15,000 difference here, but, you know, there is a certain cost to, to polluting the environment. And then the other thing is the issue of, say, resale value, for example, I know, but we tend to run our vehicles into the ground, right?
A minimum of 10-year life.
Yeah, so resale is not a factor here, yeah.
I think this is kind of, one of those areas, we're looking for direction from council. You know, my goal is to, to switch to alternate fuel vehicles or hybrid vehicles wherever we can, because there, in our city, there's a lot of places that we just frank, quite frankly, can't. Squad cars would be one of them at this point in time.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my only real concern here is emission level. You know, how does this subcompact do with respect to emissions compared to, say, the-
I'm going to bring up the issue I bring up every time we talk about sustainability, which is, we have no goals from which to make any determinations about anything. So without a goal, we can't really talk, is this the best way to meet our goal, is that the best way to meet our goals? So if you, if we give ourselves an energy budget, just like I give my household an energy, I give my household a budget, a dollar budget, I can then decide to buy the really expensive ice cream, because it fits in the budget, and then I economize someplace else here. And so I feel like our logic is, let's figure out, you know, should we be less bad now? Should we buy the LED lights and be less bad now, or should we buy the hybrid vehicle and be less bad? And actually, that's not, I don't want that to be the frame in which we're doing things. We really need to be looking at, do we have an emissions goal for our fleet? I mean, this is, you know, could we create an emissions goal for our fleet? It might be that within that emissions goal, then, yeah, the squad cars will make a big part of that, but our overall goal is met, despite the fact that we continue to have squad cars that need to be very powerful to do the things they need to do. We have some biodiesel engines, we, things, engines running biodiesel, we have other engines, trucks that'll be running straight diesel. So I think that that's really the picture I think we need to look at instead, and then you won't have the issue of, should I do this or not do this? I think in this case, you made a good case, let's, you know, go with the compact car. But it, but it isn't situated within a larger, say, emissions budget or energy budget that we try to create for our whole fleet, that then we can try to fit things underneath. So I guess that would be my suggestion, too, is fleet manager, and to us as a city, as we look at sustainable Urbana is, what are our goals, and how can we achieve those so that we're not doing the sexy new thing, but it has the law of diminishing returns, or the expense of going that last mile to do something is so high that would make more sense for us to do something that's maybe less cutting-edge technology, but applies to more vehicles or more streetlights? Those are the kinds of questions- Those are the kinds of questions we need to ask ourselves, and we can't unless we actually have larger picture goals of what we're trying to meet.
Actually, I think I could help answer that. I know that a staff member has been assigned to help develop and work through our sustainability plan, and we'll be working with Brandon and staff to put some meat on the bones that we've laid out, and we'll be coming to council sometime in March, I believe. Is that correct, Mayor? I don't know.
We're going to have, we will be doing it after we have a sustainability forum here in the council chambers on February 27th. So, Brandon is going to be talking about what the city's doing, and John Marlin, the former head of the Illinois Pollution Control Board, and then a staff person from the university who deals with agricultural sustainability.
Libby?
What we're working on is to take the Sustainable Urbana report and put it into a plan and policy format, so we'll have some context. It'll have good information that was prepared by council and staff several months ago now. But add to, there's some updates and things that we've gotten done, and then, most importantly, add an implementation table and schedule from which to develop priorities, and hopefully some budgeting from that as well. And part of that will be looking at our Cool Cities obligation in terms of emissions, and trying to get some performance guarantees in there as well, performance measures. So, just, it's a wonderful report, lots of ideas, but we want to help organize that. So, we've assigned two or one planner and one staff member as a background in environmental science to work with Public Works staff and putting it into that improved format. And then, hopefully, we'll bring it back to you in late March, working hard on it.
Robert?
To me, since we don't have all that information available, it seems like to have, it would not preclude the fact that if we came up with the technology tomorrow with the subcompact, we could unload it and get a subcompact that had, was a hybrid. So, I think as we develop all these energy-efficient concepts and ideas, we've got to move along with technology as well. And I think the people that are making the decisions have to have some degree of latitude with their, in terms of how they approach it. And to make that adjustment, you know, I don't plan to keep the car 10 years. If the technology comes up, I might have it three and a half, you know, and trade it off, or whatever. I think, you know, to make certain assumptions at this point would be inappropriate, and give the people latitude to develop along with technology. I think that'd be appropriate at this point.
Heather?
Are you looking for a motion tonight, Ron?
No. I think we were just looking, well, one, we just wanted to communicate to you that we still have a commitment to the sustainability in our vehicles and all the things we talked about. But, and I just wanted to show an example, this was one particular case in which we looked at the numbers and said, you know, it doesn't seem to make sense in this one particular case.
Of course, my question would might be is, could they do all this work off a bicycle? That would be sustainable. Heather?
Well, I appreciate you coming to us with this information and doing the homework that, to give us the information to make an educated decision.
Mayor?
I appreciate that.
Yeah. I asked them to come and talk to the council, because I know we're interested in sustainability, but you need to know why some of these decisions are being made. It's not because we're deviating from the overall plan, but it just, some things don't make sense at this point.
While we're on the sustainability issue, I would also like to call everybody's attention to the memo from Bill Gray and Rod Fletcher concerning some expanded recycling opportunities. We are, we are moving ahead on a pilot commercial recycling in downtown. We've identified some ways to deal with thermostats, and finally, compact fluorescent bulbs, where the city will stock some recycle pack boxes that folks can purchase. Do they, do they come to Public Works to do that, so they, so public that wants to recycle compact fluorescent bulbs can come to Public Works and buy a, do they buy a portion, or do they have to buy the whole box? They have to buy a whole box? Okay. So, so you need to have, what, six small bulbs at a time? Yes, if you, six, or is it 12? Okay. So, the packs hold 12 small bulbs and, or one large, one, they're a separate pack for a single long fluorescents. Is that correct?
13.
Do they have to buy that many?
It's just that the larger tubes, it holds 15, and the smaller T8 energy-efficient tubes, it holds 30 of them. And you can get ones for four feet that are $33, or you can get ones that are eight feet for $53. And so, you can recycle it that way. And the small bulbs are $15 to recycle 12. And a lot of people don't know that your fluorescent lights contain mercury, so you don't want to take the fluorescent tube or the compact fluorescent and put it in the trash. Unfortunately, you don't know that when you buy it, that you're actually also buying liability to try to have to deal with these things afterwards. This isn't the right way to handle toxic waste, the way that we currently do it, but it is the way that the market is currently handling it. So, don't throw your fluorescents away. You'll have to recycle them if you don't want to add mercury to the land.
Yeah. I'd be interested in seeing if we could develop a way so people could pay by the bulb or something on getting this done. Some, so, and then finally, I would like to remind everybody that we do have a household battery program with drop-offs at five locations for recyclables and alkaline batteries, or rechargeables and alkaline batteries, and cell phones. The whole cell phone can be dropped off as part of the rechargeable battery. And, yes, and there are four locations that do all five things. They need a purpose, the Urbana City Building, the Urbana Free Library, and at Public Works. And in addition, you can drop off alkaline batteries at the Phillips Recreation Center. So, and this is for small household batteries, not the big stuff. So, anything else for council? Thank you, gentlemen. Seeing no further business, we're adjourned.